And.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We'd like to start off today with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land on which we're gathered today is unceded territory of the Wiat people, who continue to live and thrive on this land today. It's surrounded by the traditional ancestral and present homeland of several indigenous nations, including the Hoopa, Karuk, Matol, Tolawa, Wailaki, and Urok that make up Humboldt and Del Norte counties. All right. That brings us to item 1.2, general public comments. Are there any general public comments today? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item 1.3, member comments. Any comments from our membership?
I would just say thank you for the attachments under that item on the agenda.
Ah, perfect, yes. Yeah, and thank you Cynthia for giving us the little wallet cards. Those are super helpful. Trustee Mullery?
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. Dunphy for putting together a very nice presentation I was able to sit in on earlier this week. I know you were in on it as well, President Kelly. Celebrating first generation students and providing them support. I thought it was very well done.
All right. I would just like to report that I had an opportunity to sit on the advisory committee for the legislative, for the CCLC, as well as I just finished a meeting today for the Governance and Bylaws Committee for the ACCT. It was interesting. It's interesting to watch them struggle with how do we onboard new members and help them improve and become better members as well. So, once again, I feel like our board is already ahead of these curves and talking about these things. All right. I'm not hearing anything else, although Sally, I did see that you took yourself off mute. Did you have anything for member comments? All right. Let's move on to item 1.4, Board Committee Reports.
President Kelly?
Yes, Trustee Matthews.
So I would like to report that the Audit and Finance Committee met today. We met with Vice President Morrison, who reviewed the governor's current budget proposal for the 2122 academic year. And the information was positive, improving, but uncertain. So there's a little asterisk there, a big asterisk there because of the, you know, state's economic conditions. We also met with Steve Curry from our auditing firm of CWDL. He reviewed the the audit of the college for 2020. And and it was excellent. We had a good discussion and questions. And the board voted to approve the audit committee, the audit report from CWDL, and will be recommending its acceptance by the Board of Trustees at the March Board Meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Matthews. Are there any other reports for 1.4? Dr. Mullery?
Yes, thank you, President Kelly. I can report on two committees. The Student Success Committee, and that's made up of yourself, President Kelly, Trustee Robertson, and myself, and facilitating that group. We met, I don't know, about a week or so ago. Our meeting was primarily, I would call it organizational, to try to really understand what the charge is at that committee. Given that, we decided it might be in everyone's best interest to talk to someone at the college regarding what we currently have regarding student success in terms of some metrics and definitions. So with that, I contacted President Flamer, who suggested that we have a meeting at which Paul Chown would attend and help us work through what we want to do in terms of providing some support for the college in achieving student success, however that might be defined, which will be multiple ways. So that's coming up next, a meeting with Mr. Chown. I can also report on the President's Evaluation Committee. Sitting on it are Trustees Copini, Trustees Matthews, and myself. I'll be facilitating that group. We are at the stage where we do have a draft of an evaluation instrument that we are working on. And after we complete the draft, then pursuant to our procedures, we will be meeting with President Flamer to discuss the instrument and our process moving forward. So we're making good progress in that committee as well. That's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mullery. Dr. Robertson?
I'd like to report on the Advocacy Committee. We held our first meeting on January 18th. This committee is comprised of myself, you, President Kelly, and Trustee Biggins. We decided that I would chair the committee. The committee discussed what its vision and aims might be. It was largely an organizational meeting. We identified some areas that we may focus our advocacy efforts on, including funding and equity. We also discussed how we might monitor the state and federal legislative priorities of the CCLC to help us decide what our focus might be, what our aims might be through the coming year. In addition, to serve as a quick reference, we had wallet-sized cards made and sent to each trustee containing key information about the college and its student body. And then we set up our next meeting for March 2nd.
Thank you very much. All right. That'll bring us to 1.5, the status of Board of Trustees requests. Dr. Flamer, do you have anything you'd like to say to lead us out?
No, thank you. It's all pretty self-evident in the report.
Okay. Any questions or discussions for my colleagues? All right. That brings us to the Consent Calendar Action Items. This time, we ask anyone who wishes to discuss separately to pull items. Is there anybody who would like to pull an item from consent? And Trustee Dorn?
2.4 and 2.5?
2.4 and 2.5? Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items except 2.4 and 2.5. All right, so we have a first by Mullery and a second by Trustee Dorn. Cynthia, would you mind calling a roll call?
Carol Matthews?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Colleen Mullery?
Yes.
Sally Biggins? Sally Biggins? Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Sally Biggins?
This is, this is Trustee Biggins, yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes. All right, thank you. It's good to hear your voice, Trustee Biggins.
I, thank you. I'm having a lot of trouble today. I had to call in.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that. Let's see, Trustee Dorn asked that we discuss 2.4 and 2.5. Trustee Dorn?
So just a quick, if you could just explain to me the 15% out-of-class on the one, I don't have my schedule in front of me. How, how does that work? And why does it work?
Why, would you, would you, you say, how does it work? And what was your follow-up question? Why?
And why, why do we do that? Plus a 15% out-of-class pay?
What, what we do there, make sure I'm off mute, is that if there's some work that is beyond a classified staff member's scope of work, then, but the work needs to be done by the institution, instead of investing into, in a personnel cost that, that we still have to reevaluate. So we take someone who has expertise in that area out, to work out of class to take care of, or to address the work that needs to be done for the college. And we are limited to 960 hours per out-of-class base, period. So, so for example, if we needed work done in financial aid, that, that goes beyond a classified staff member's workload or scope of work, that we could pay them a certain amount to, to, to address that workload.
Yeah, I just, I don't remember seeing this before, and I was just curious about it. So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Great.
And this item, President Kelly, may I, may I mention something, please?
Please, yes.
I mean, I am, I'm glad that Trustee Dorn pulled this particular item for conversation. Because on item two, Cynthia, would you please scroll up to the second? Item, thank you. Patricia Church withdrew from the position late last night. So she is not included as ratification or approval for hiring.
Thank you, Dr. Flamer. Trustee Dorn, did you have any other questions about 2.4?
Nope, no, I just wanted to learn what that was all about.
Certainly. Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion to?
Go move.
Thank you, Trustee.
Both of them together.
Oh, okay. Well, in that, I mean, if that's the way we do it, let's see, 2.5? Anything you want to discuss there?
Yeah, so if you could just, just explain the athletic contract and what, again, what the purpose of it is? I was just really interested in that, you know, especially tying in with our questions regarding the dorms and the survey. Thank you.
Trustee Dorn, thank you for that question, because you're right, it is tied to the dorms. But as, as the board may remember, I've made a commitment to, to bring back football at some point, given certain, that criteria are met. And what I wanted to do with Gene Holloway, because he has expertise in student services as well as athletics, is to take a very deep dive on what the athletic program is doing and what the, how, what we have to do to change the culture of athletics if we brought football back. So he, he did, he's taking a look at that, talking to coaches, our community members, to ascertain their view of athletics. And specifically, what conditions or what things we have to fix within the athletic department if we want to bring, when we bring football back.
And then he'll give us a report, the board a report on his findings?
No, actually, he will give the, the findings to me.
Okay.
And then I will in turn send it to the board. I expect his findings sometime this week.
Oh, wow.
Does he give recommendations?
Yes, he'll, he'll, he will discuss what he's found, but also recommendations for moving forward.
Good job. I move to approve 2.4 and 2.5.
Second?
Thank you, Trustees Dorn and Matthews. There's no further discussion. Cynthia, would you mind calling a roll?
Carol Matthews?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Colleen Mullery?
Yes.
Sally Biggins?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes. All right. Thank you all. This brings us down to our action and discussion items, starting with item 3.1. Dr. Flamer?
And if Vice, Vice President Morrison, if you could walk us through this, this board item, please?
Certainly. And Cynthia, if you can go ahead and open the report, please? The first one, December 2020 report, yep. Thank you. So this report shows the actual revenues and expenditures for the Unrestricted General Fund for the period through December 31st, 2020. And you will see, we finally received some property taxes, 4.94 million. And we have also some Prop 30 EPA. Those are typically, we get a little lag on those. We still haven't gotten any information about the California State Lottery, although by the time this report had been created, however, I did look and see, and we're starting to see our California State Lottery revenue coming in, at least for the first quarter. So overall, total revenue is at 19.4 million. That's 56.7% of our budgeted amount. It's a little bit less than where we were at this point in time last year. And we will be getting another month's worth of portionments in January. And then after that, we, it will, it'll be the deferral time. So we'll have those, our, our cash flow coming in. And our state apportionment revenue will be fairly stagnant going forward, at least just for that portion. We have other cash sources coming in. Down to the uses of funds, nothing too much. I don't, I don't think really anything to mention there, other than we're under budget, which is great. And we are a little bit lower than where we were at this point in time last year. Our, currently, our expected ending fund balance is still 9%. However, you will see an adjustment on the next monthly financial status report in March. And that will show the audited ending fund balance, which if you looked at the audit, it did come out at 10.1%. So that, that, that really helps us in these challenging times. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Vice President Morrison. Not seeing any questions from my colleagues. Trying to view the camera there. Thank you for your report. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay, so I see, first with Trustee Biggins, second with Trustee Dorn. Cynthia?
Carol Matthews?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Colleen Mullery?
Yes.
Sally Biggins?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. That moves us to 3.2. Is there any discussion on this item? Do we, do we need to call for a motion in a second before we discuss?
We should, we should.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
I still move.
Okay, Dr. Mullery? Trustee Dorn? Great. Any discussion on 3.2? Would we like to hear overview from President Flamer?
I most certainly can, is, is Jack Mioto and Julian Morrison and I have been talking to our constituent members, CRFO, CCA, as well as the council, to talk about a SERP, which is a supplemental retirement incentive that, that we would offer this spring semester to capture as many potential retirements as possible. We, we thought that this would be a very good way to attempt to, to cut our personnel expenses as much as we can and not resort to any draconian cuts that we may have to do in the future, because of the budget uncertainty. I believe that we have Gail Beal, who is available, if the board would like to ask any specific questions about the SERP. Terrific.
President Kelly?
Yes, Trustee Matthews?
So basically, could you just explain how the financing of this works and how you determine if the SERP is going to meet our goal, or whether there aren't enough people in it to make it work money-wise?
Gail, may I please refer that to you?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. So the way the program is financed, it's a fixed guaranteed annuity, which means your costs and the benefits to the participants, participants will not change. So it's not affected by the market. Having said that, we move through, and we take you completely through the enrollment. Once we know who's taking the plan, then we come up with the total premium that will pay for those, those costs. At that point, you are invoiced once a year for five years to pay 20% of the premium. So you're not putting up all the money ahead of time. So you're spreading out those payments. And also, there's, there's no cost, no obligation. So if you don't get the results you need in order for the plan to move forward, you're not paying us anything, and the, the plan basically is, is revoked. So what you're approving essentially is to offer the plan.
Right. Right. So the goal is, is to save enough on the salaries of people who retire to cover the cost of the benefit and still save enough money to make it worth, worthwhile.
Correct. And we, when we do our feasibility study, we also include not only just the cost of the plan in the savings, but we also deduct retiree healthcare costs as well as natural attrition. So the savings you would have gotten with X number of people going without a plan. So you get a net-net savings.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this, is this structured like a, I forget what they're called, like a joint life annuity? In other words, are there, are there survivorship rights for the spouse?
There certainly are. So there are nine different benefit options from which an individual can choose. And they range from three lifetime benefits, two of which have survivor options, to periods certain, or for payout periods of five through 10 years, depending on a choice. And for the five-year payout, as an example, there would be 60 checks issued either to the retiree or the survivor. So all those checks would be paid out. The only option that does not provide for a beneficiary is the life-only benefit. And that, that's pretty much what it says it is. It's just for the retiree's life.
Thank you. Trustee Dorn?
So then, this question's actually for President Flamer. When we did the last one of these for all the faculty, did we do that within the college, or did Keenan do that? I don't remember this part of it.
Keenan did it 10, 10 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, President Flamer?
It's very quickly, just, just want the board and the community to know that this, doing it this early, so quickly now, will allow the, the administration to plan in the future. Not just faculty replacements, but also how this SERP will affect our, our compliance with the 50% law. So it gives us time to plan.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands raised. Let's see. Cynthia, do you mind calling the roll?
Carol Matthews?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Colleen Mullery?
Yes.
Sally Biggins?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. I thank you, Gail. And I didn't get the pronunciation, Lisa.
Sorry, it's Liesel.
Liesel, thank you for joining us and, and providing answers to our questions. All right, that'll bring us to item 3.3, Student Non-Resident Tuition Fee and Non-Resident Capital Outlay Fee for 2122.
I move approval.
Thank you, Trustee Mullery?
My second. I'm sorry.
Okay. And a second with Trustee Copini. All right, is there any discussion? Do we need some background on this? All right. Cynthia?
Carol Matthews?
Yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Colleen Mullery?
Yes.
Sally Biggins?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes. All right, we're burning through this. 3.4, Quarterly Financial Status Report. Dr. Flamer? Oh. I gotta approve it. Motion, second.
I move to approve.
Okay, I see Matthews, and was that Trustee Biggins?
Yes.
Okay, second. Trustee Biggins, great. Dr. Flamer?
And Vice President Morrison, could you give a very brief outline about what we're asking the board to approve today?
Sure, this is the second quarter, 311 Financial Report, and it goes through the period ending December 31st, 2020. Same period as you saw the monthly financial status report. And the amounts will be the same as what was on the monthly financial status report. If you look at the revenues and the expenses, what is new with this one, we didn't see in quarter one. It's since the annual 311 from 201920 has now been approved. It shows actuals for 201920, including the 10.1% ending fund balance. And then also at the bottom, where we can add a little bit about if we have issues this year, or we're expecting issues, just the ongoing, not knowing what's going to be happening because of the pandemic. And then also getting through the, the deferrals are kind of the main issues right now. And making sure we have adequate cash, cash flow for our operations. And then also the concern, the potential ongoing concern about the decline enrollment and when, and how quickly it might increase.
Thank you, Vice President Morrison. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Trustee Dorn?
I should have asked it in the other report, but maybe Vice President Morrison could just tell the board what she sort of told the audit committee regarding the use of a trans?
Right, so because of the deferrals and ongoing, a district should be looking at its cash flow on a regular basis, but more so right now. And it's looking like, if, if we use all of the assumptions and our actuals, and now that we have our, our books closed and our true ending cash balance from June 30 of 2020, we're still looking like we're okay for now. We're closely monitoring the situation. I'm looking at revenue through June 30, 2021, or not revenue, excuse me, cash flow or cash balance anticipated. We're still not quite to that needing a tran yet.
Thank you.
President Flamer? I've been hearing, you know, these legislative updates and discussions about it. Oh, the deferral at most will be a month or two, and then the state will pay it back. And then somebody else will pipe up, oh, but last time it took them five years.
Yes.
How do you guys see this going, based on your experience and what you're hearing in, in your circles?
Based on what my, my conversation with CEOs is that we were all taking a very conservative approach to the budget. Is that, yes, that the, that the revenue is up, tax revenue is up. And, and the governor has proposed some money to buy down those, those, those deferrals. However, we really won't know for sure until July, August of next summer. And, and I think the, the LAO's office has recommended that we all take a very conservative approach, because we don't know, or they don't know if the tax revenue, that assumptions that Sacramento is putting out is actually going to hold. And so right now, we don't know if, if Sacramento will buy down part of the deferrals or all the deferrals. It depends on their actual revenue coming in. So we're, we're being very conservative, assuming that, that the, the deferrals will still happen. And you're right, based on past history, the state can, can always wipe out what those deferrals are in two years or five years. It depends what in two years or five years. It depends what the state's budget is.
Thank you. Any other further questions or discussion on item 3.4? Cynthia, would you mind calling our roll?
Carol Matthews?
Sorry, yes.
Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Colleen Mullery?
Yes.
Sally Biggins?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Rebecca Robertson?
Yes.
Danny Kelly?
Yes. Thank you, Cynthia. All right, 3.5, first read of board policies and administrative procedures.
President, want me to tie this up at this point?
Yes.
Trustees, so BP 3200, that has already gone through College Council, and so the board is seeing it, that went through College Council for the for a first read, and the other BPs and Ap's have been updated based on the CCLC's league updates.
So President Flamer, I had a question on BP 2725 Board Member Compensation.
Yes.
So the update, I assume, is the part in yellow?
Yes.
And that is because of a CCLC template?
Yes, it is, and based on legal review.
And legal review, okay, because I never heard before that that was a possibility.
Be the edco change to allow this to happen.
Okay, so clearly this would be sometime down the road under different circumstances, but I was just interested in seeing it there.
Yes.
Thank you.
This reflects edco changes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Matthews. Trustee Dorn?
Well, actually, President Flamer, I was curious of edco change, but I did want to ask President Flamer, what's 5% of nothing?
At some point, I imagine, with the budget
I just
Okay. Zero.
We can have a sense of humor once in a while at the board.
All right. Moving on to item 4.1, farm update. Silas, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm going to share my screen. Yeah, so thank you for having me. For those of you that don't know, I'm Silas Sorevinsky, the Agriculture Production Manager at College of the Redwoods. And this is just a status update on the farm and what we've been doing. I think it's been a couple of years since I provided a board update on the farm, so kind of an overview of what we've been doing, and then with the COVID impact as well. So our primary goals for the Shively Farm, we have three main goals that we try to focus all of our activities on, and that are, they are supporting educational programs, expanding outreach efforts, and enhancing the financial position of the farm. So we're going to go through this and kind of focus on each goal, specifically the financial position, and the impacts on these goals as well. So with COVID, obviously, it's impacted everyone, and the farm is not sparing of that. And so when courses shifted to online in spring 2020, that also happened at the farm. We had a course that had to go strictly online. And we had general elective courses in the ag program that were going to be held at the Shively Farm as well for summer and fall. Since there were general electives, we decided to not offer those courses. We did have one course in fall 2020 that utilized the farm, tractor operations, but it did have an impact on those face-to-face courses. Large events, we had to cancel those as well. We were able to build up in the last couple of years our outreach and events down at the Shively Farm. But we did still have some events, which I'll talk about later. And then our traditional farm sale outlets, some of them just disappeared, and we had to figure out new ways to pivot and generate revenue for the farm to keep it going. So for our educational programs, we want to serve as a hands-on lab for students, specifically ag students, but also other programs in career ed and beyond. So for instance, next week, forestry will be coming out to do a lab at the farm, construction oftentimes as well. We want to have student internships at the farm. Brendan Brianna, the picture on the left, were interns last season. We offer a full-season internship that goes through spring, summer, and fall to really give them a diversified farm viewpoint for a whole season versus just one semester. And then through work-based learning, through federal work-study program, we're able to offer paid positions for student workers, and they're also able to enroll in Ag 42, which is cooperative work experience to gain credits as well while working at the farm. We always want to expand our outreach efforts, and pre-COVID, we're starting to have more large events. In 2019, we had a high school farm preview day where we opened up the farm to prospective local high school students and ag programs that we're thinking about going to CR. And then, and also in 2019, we had a two-day Humboldt Dell North Future Farmers of America Officer Retreat down at the farm where all the different high schools and their leadership groups in Future Farmers of America came out and did leadership activities and whatnot. We had had talks of, you know, they liked using the farm so much to continue to do that, and we hope, you know, it didn't happen in 2020, but in 2021, it might be a possibility. So we did have to shift our outreach efforts. So we did have a pumpkin patch where we were open for two consecutive weekends this past fall. We made over $6,000 in revenue on the pumpkins, and also on, we had like a little farm booth set up as well. But not just the revenue, I think it was really great for the community to be able to come out and have some sense of normalcy in their lives with the pandemic going on. And we had a lot of families that were just looking to get their kids out, and they're really, really appreciative of us having, you know, the farm accessible even so far out in Shively. They were really willing to come out there, and it was a great turnout. We also have done community donations. So this past season, we donated roughly 350 pounds of produce to the St. Joe's Pantry and the Adventist Food Bank. And that was spearheaded by one of our part-time workers, Sean Todd. He runs the Fortuna Community Garden Project. And it's kind of, it's a passion of his, and he really made sure to not let any of our produce go to waste, which was great. We also donated 823 pounds of summer squash, cucumbers, and spaghetti squash to Food for People as well. Our third goal is to enhance the financial position of the farm. So if you look at this chart in the middle, this is our revenue the past five years. In 2017, 2018, you can see it's pretty low, it was about $11,000. That was when there was an interim farm manager, Franz Roloffson, our full-time ag faculty, and he was kind of balancing both roles at the time, so it was kind of hard to really, you know, utilize the farm fully. 2018, 2019, was my first year, and we were able to increase our revenue. And then last year, we made just under $59,000, which was great. So right now, year-to-date, in this fiscal year, so July 1st to June 30th, we are at $44,000, and projected with remaining sales for the remainder of the year, we hope to make a little over $65,000 in revenue on the farm. We're really happy about that, and just the fact that we're able to pivot and utilize new sales channels to hopefully make more than what we had made previously, even with the COVID impacts. This right here kind of breaks it down by where we are generating revenue. So CSA sales, for those of you that are unfamiliar with CSA sales, it's a box-share program where somebody signs up as a member in preseason, and then they get a box of produce each week throughout the growing season. So we offered this in the 1920 year, and we had a decent amount of members. And then we were soliciting sign-ups last spring, and then COVID hit, and everybody wanted to join a CSA, and we had a huge uptick. And it was a really big increase, as you can see. Our alfalfa sales, so we do grow alfalfa down at the farm that we sell to local farmers and ranchers. They dipped a little bit, but stayed pretty consistent. Our farmer's market is one of the most drastic ones. So on campus, pre-COVID, during the harvest season, we would have a farm booth, I would say, on campus once a week where we would sell produce to staff and students. And that all, but when, you know, disappeared. And then we're also going to a Friday night farmer's market in Old Town Eureka as well. And that was one of the few markets that actually got canceled because it wasn't just food. They had a lot of crafts and such, too. So we knew that farmer's markets going into the summer and fall was not going to be really an option for us. So that's why we focused more on the CSA. Events dipped a little bit, but even with COVID, the pumpkin patch really was a success. Dining sales pretty much went away, and that's just because the dining had, you know, less of a demand, I would say. And then we did really try to focus on wholesale. And I'll go over some of those numbers in the next slide. The little chart on the top right, that's just our expenses versus revenue. So the 18, 19 year, we did have a little bit of a profit. 19, 20, those books haven't been closed officially yet, but it should hopefully be somewhat to those numbers. And then 2021, that is what we are year-to-date. So again, we had to have a major shift in our sales outlets. So we did have a wholesale push where we sold over $7,000 in produce to the Veggie Wagon, which is, if you're not familiar, the south end of Eureka off the Herrick Avenue turnoff, that little produce area there, they sell a lot of our produce. Clendenens, we had about $4,000 in sales. And then we started selling to three Murphy's markets this past fall as well, and we hope on Murphy's. The CSA demand, so we had 60 members at the peak of the season, and we offered three pickup locations to try to be as flexible as possible for people that were maybe working from home or not coming to campuses frequently. So that was, I think, really appreciated by our members as well. Our farmer's markets, they're all but eliminated, as I said, so we focused on that CSA in wholesale. These two pictures on your right, it's kind of neat to see. So that's Brendan, one of our student interns, and Sean Todd, and that was late May after we finished planting our tomatoes and tomateos in that area. And then the picture with the tomatoes is actually that same area a few months later, and all those tomatoes being dry-farmed as well, and it's just kind of cool to see the change in seasons down there. We're really fortunate, you know, I know there's logistical issues with the Shively Farm, but it's one of the best soils and best areas to grow produce. So we also want to utilize alternative funding streams, the Strong Workforce Program through the Career Education Department. My position, the manager position, was 50% funded by the Strong Workforce Program in this current year. And so traditionally, the general fund has had a $95,000 roughly transfer out to the farm to pay for the manager's position, and this year, it'll be a little over $50,000. We've also been able to have instructional support specialists that work at the farm part-time and also teach some of our ag courses as well. And then an internship, they fund the internship program and a farm stand project we're working on, which I'll talk about in a second. We do have the Cow Trans grant from 2008 still, and we were able to purchase quite a bit of equipment through that grant this past year with plans to finish out the purchasing this, in 2021. We, of course, always want to increase our program offerings and what we do. So Sam Clinton there in the farm stand picture, he was a student of ours in 2019, and that's what we had typically done pre-COVID was we'd set up a couple tables and a canopy, and sell our produce about once a week. And so right now, we're working on having a permanent farm stand on campus. And that stand is actually, it's, we're transitioning a storage shed right across from the Board of Trustees parking lot into a farm stand, and we're working with CSJA and our construction program, they're collaborating to change that shed into a farm stand that we can offer produce more than just once per week. We'll also have an EBT reader in there, we'll have a card reader, and I think it'll just be really accessible for students and staff, and it should be a really positive thing to have on our campus. We hope to have that ready to go by fall 2021. We also hope to complete our grant, Cow Trans grant purchases, continue to increase our CSA and wholesale sales, and then we're always looking to seek partnerships with local schools, extension office, and grant opportunities. At this point, I just want to turn it over to questions, comments, anything about the farm, and anything for me?
I have a comment.
Yes.
You know, since this has been going for about 20 years, I've never ever seen it run this good, you know? And I mean, you know, what could you say about it? I mean, it's incredible what you've done. And man, in the past, you know, it kind of went up a little bit, but then it kind of went down. I mean, this is extraordinary, and and, you know, this, we should be you know, promoting it, not only for the students, but we're, you know, giving back to the community. And the rest of you, rest of my trustee colleagues, you know, Silas comes from a family down here in the Old River Valley, probably not a more of a hard-working family, and they have experience in this. And it's very rare, very rare, that you get someone like this to manage your farm. I'm just, I'm not blown away because I expected it from them, you know, so I really not. So it meets my expectations, and it couldn't be better.
Thank you, trustee Copini. I really appreciate that.
Dr. Mullery, and then trustee Dorn?
Yes, thank you, President Kelly. I would also like to follow up with what trustee Copini just said. It's really a pleasure to hear you present and see what you're doing. I just couldn't be happier about what's going on with the farm. I think the trustees, current and in the past, always knew that there was really great potential there, but we just seem to have a hard time reaching its potential. But you, Silas, you're doing it, and I really, really appreciate it. And thank you for putting together such a well-done presentation. It was really very well-done. Good on you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Dorn?
Yeah, I think it was really impressive. I mean, really impressive. I'm right with trustee Copini. And, but I did want to mention something to you and President Flamer. When I saw the first slide of the pruning of the fruit trees, you know, maybe in the future, you might consider doing a community outreach, or adult ed, or community ed, whatever it's called today, on some of, like pruning. I mean, I was doing YouTube when I had to prune my orchard, and I think there's a lot of farming stuff, especially with COVID, that we're going back to the basics of gardening and everything like that, that there's probably, would be a huge, really it would be a great outreach program to the community.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Dorn. And we are trying to develop some more, like the farm stands, hopefully just a start of more agriculture activities on our campus itself. I can see having an orchard area, you know, maybe small, that we would be able to do workshops here and maybe demo days, just because the farm, you know, I was shocked at the turnout for the pumpkin patch just because it's so remote, but it's great to utilize it in the summer and fall months, especially if there's a summer bridge that makes it more accessible. But that's why we've been just hesitant to have workshops this time of year, is just we're unsure of who would want to drive out there and what we're asking them. You know, they might not know what they're getting into, but that is a very good point. I hope we can incorporate that.
And there's a real turn, I mean, down in Southern Humboldt, when we were buying our fruit trees last week, they were already selling out. And they talked about all the vegetables that had sold out in the summertime. They'd never had such a big year. And I don't know if you've ever considered the farmer's market in Southern Humboldt?
Yes, so we have considered farmer's markets. What I try to do is I try to sell our produce in areas that do not have the demand met locally.
Okay.
You know, the Garberville Farmer's Market and Arcade of Farmer's Market, for instance, they have plenty of farmers with everything we grow. And we're trying not to step on farmers' toes. So, you know, when I noticed Murphy's, for instance, didn't have local produce, some local produce, you know, kind of comes and goes. I saw that as an opportunity for us to kind of step in, you know, I knew the co-op, I know Eureka Natural, they were already getting their needs met locally. So we did go to some Arcade of Farmer's Markets, which was really great outreach, and it was good for our intern to get some of that experience at a farmer's market. But that was in spring when there wasn't that many vendors. Just peak season when we have everything, it seems like everyone else does as well, and we just try to be aware of it.
Makes a lot of sense, Silas. Thank you.
Stop sharing.
So for, as a new trustee to the board, you know, when I first came on, all I heard about was why are we transferring money to the farm? What about the farm? Why the farm? why, why are we transferring money to the farm? What about the farm? Why the farm? Nobody's saying that now. Truly phenomenal work, um Silas, uh, and and you know, I'm super appreciative of it. Trustees, he didn't put on his slide, but he also uh saved the Fortunicoanis down here. We uh upped our game this pumpkin patch season, and we put up some giant inflatables, and then all of a sudden, people came and bought out all our stuff. Silas dropped by with some extra pumpkins and produce for us that helped put us over the top to donate to Big Brothers Big Sister, so. And he just, he just came by one afternoon, one evening, and dropped it off for us. It was, it was really spectacular. Um, Clendenins, you know, uh, went in this year and there was produce, it was crazy, and uh Cliff said that it was doing really great, and uh was appreciative to have that partnership with you guys. So thank you. I noticed that we uh approved uh closing the uh potential for drone program with uh forestry, because we couldn't find talent for it, but I'm not sure, um Silas, if you've ever talked to uh the forestry folks and and ever wanted to combine some kind of a drone program for agriculture. But I got, just got to say, this is fantastic. You've done great work. I'm I'm super proud that you come from the Ill River Valley down here and the work you're doing. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Trustee Kelly. Appreciate it.
President Kelly? President Kelly?
Biggin, yes, hi.
Oh, thank you. Hi. Um, I'm able to see the PowerPoint on my computer. I'm not able to zoom, but I can uh hook up to the PowerPoint, and it's really exceptional. And we should be, and as we are, very proud of this program. I wondered if there would ever be an opportunity that they could take this show on the road, so to speak, and make a presentation at a state conference, you know, like the trustees conferences, or, you know, maybe the other, you know, other professional groups, uh, you know, the instructional leaders or the CEOs or, I mean, I really, I think that this is a model that needs to be shared um with other districts, uh, because it's something that they might consider themselves. Anyway, it it, the the slides are just really exceptional. I wanted to thank him for including these uh, this PowerPoint in the agenda so that I could see it without being on Zoom.
Thank you, Trustee Biggin.
All right, oh, and and I I can't uh fail to mention also Dean Mayor and and her role in leadership in this. I I remember a couple of years ago in your presentation, hearing about some of the leadership decisions that were being made, so congratulations, Dean Mayor, on this program as well.
Thank you, President Kelly.
Yes, I would add to that. Dean Mayor has been a huge help, and a couple of years ago when I presented, she actually presented with me, kind of helping me out and everything, and uh, I really appreciated everything that she has uh done for the program and helped with. It's, I, it would, it would be different if she was not around, I think, so she's been very helpful and supportive.
Thank you, Silas. I think we make an excellent team.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you, sir.
Yep, I'll stop sharing there.
All right, well, uh, on that high note, uh, let's move on to item four point two, the student success data. Dr. Flamer?
Certainly, the the board asked for an update on where we are with enrollment. So we, so it, this particular item talks about our spring enrollment to date. Um, we are down nineteen percent headcount as well as FTS, which is not uncommon with other schools, o- other community colleges across the nation. We're all down in some, to to some degree. But I also want to point out that what 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 is quite interesting is because of the current accountability method from the state, we get less FTS apportionment for online courses than we do for face-to-face courses, which kind, which quite frankly, um, flies in the face of what the the state is is discussing of tying COLA to increasing in online courses starting in the twenty-one, twenty-two year. And that is why we're pushing as CEOs hu- back pretty hard about not tying COLA to any other type of enrollment method. And so that that is just what it looks like as a spring, but also the fact that uh we have Ryan Connor, Bob Brown, and others who are working really hard to to still boost enrollment for spring, because we have significant, we have a few late start courses. So their their group is really working hard to text students, call students, to encourage them to come back, and right now to, for the courses that we have, late start.
President Flamer? Yeah, I I just, I I wanted to say about the funding and uh the online learning, I I doubt I could find a faculty member who would tell me how much easier online learning, transitioned online learning was in terms of the amount of effort and work, and and when I attend these conferences and I I listen to the state tell community colleges, well, hey, you got a bunch of funding from the feds, when that funding went directly to students, uh, as it, as it should have, you know, this is a strange COVID times, and they needed that support, but also the colleges are going to need that support. And uh, our advocacy committee, um, you know, I'm glad that we're focused on um the economics of things as well, because I think there's a lot of fighting that needs to be done about this.
Yeah, trust, uh, President Kelly, I have a comment. I attended with you and with um trustee Robertson and trustee Biggin the effective trustee workshop. And to tie the COLA, I mean, it's a slap in the face to all the hard-working employees, you know? Over the last ten years, I learned they've lost eighteen percent of their purchasing power due to withholding the COLA for this reason, for that reason. It it's, it's just, uh, I just have to make that comment. I, it's a travesty. It shouldn't, it shouldn't happen. It shouldn't be conditional. That's all I have to say.
I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you, Trustee Dorn. Any other comments on item four point two?
President Kelly?
Trustee Matthews?
So I'm just trying to kind of get this through my head. So even though colleges were forced to teach online, that wasn't taken and into account in terms of of um i- in terms of the reimbursement? I mean, the
Yes, uh, Vice President Matthews, you are absolutely correct. And that's why some of the conversation right now is to hold harmless conversation. So although we may not get the right apportionment moving forward, but it depends upon where they base the, they hold harmless number. It could be based on eighteen nineteen or nineteen twenty, but we aren't sure of that. But nor are we sure of the, because the state will, is 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 projected to take a three-year rolling average for apportionment in the future. So we don't know, because so many, so many schools are down this year, whether this year will be part of that rolling average or not.
It it's just crazy to me that not only not only are colleges faced with the the enrollment drop, which is, you know, money dropped, but also this business of of no recognition of being forced into the online and the impact that that's had. I mean, it's, it's like a state's just saved money by not recognizing what all the colleges have had to do.
Or or reward for the successful colleges who have pulled it off so well, like CR.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Trustee Matthews. Any other discussion on item four point two? All right, moving into our organizational reports, uh, Mr. Sokolow, item five point one?
Um, I don't have much to report, uh, Mr. President. The Academic Senate hasn't met since July. We're slated to meet Friday, so I'll have much more to report at the uh March Board meeting.
Thank you, sir. It's good to have you here.
Thank you. A lot, good to be here.
All right, item five point two, Professor Hagerty?
Yes, hello, good to see all of you. Thanks for having us on your agenda. It's nice to to be here. The semester started for all of us, and everybody is, you know, really busy, of course. We are hoping that the semester is going to go smoother. I don't know, we'll see. It does appear um like President Flamer gave you the article in his report too about a lot of community college students sitting out. My experience has been, and a lot of my colleagues, that the students who are staying with us this semester are students that are at the end of their degrees. I have several students that are actually coming back and doing career changes, so, you know, we're still have that opening for um our community. CRFO has been involved in discussions with the district, kind of looking at the SERP that you guys just approved to move forward with. As a result of the the SERP conversations, we have scheduled some workshops next week with STIRS and um some financial planning workshops to try to give some people more information as they're kind of moving forward with this. And FAC, the statewide advocacy group, is helping us with that and kind of bringing STIRS in for us. We will encourage individuals to sign up for the SERP individual counseling too, so there's some group sessions, I think. In in the next several weeks, there's going to be group sessions with SERP and then individuals, so we'll make sure that everybody knows about that. Last Friday, I went to uh, a morning session with FAC that was an advocacy group, um, and we had the Vice Chancellor of Finance there, um, and then some individuals from the statewide Academic Senate for faculty and for students. There were some interesting questions asked, kind of honing in on the the funding formula and what's occurring with that. The message from the Chancellor's Office was that uh the funding formula is to increase student success and to not make colleges more relying upon, or so reliant upon, FTS. There, we were provided with a link to, I I don't know if all of you had a chance or have been given the the Funding Formula Dashboard. And so it's an interesting kind of reflection of the the data. I think our statistics instructors could do a good job with explaining some of it and some of the problems maybe with it also, I'll say. We did also at that talk about more professional development funds for faculty, both full-time and associate faculty coming from the state. Because of with COVID and, you know, how our instruction has changed so much, um, there there's even more need. The budget, so what what came out in January, and you you all were just talking about um the COLA. So FAC, the statewide advocacy group, and CCCI, which is our independent union group, have both drafted statements kind of responding to the January budget that came out. One of them, or both of them, um, were very clearly talking about the problems with COLA and COLA being tied to our number of online classes, which the number being at ten percent is is so arbitrary, you know, I I don't think anybody really understands where that's coming from. And then the K twelve received a three-point-eight-four adjustment in COLA. Um, and so it it's not clear why why our group is not receiving that, um, but K twelve was. So um, there's, there's a few statements that have been drafted, kind of going to the governor's office and going before the legislature. So also in that, the the deferrals, um, there there's a strong statement made that we should not be asked to take deferrals again because it's so unstable for the budget. Also, in in looking at the budget that came out in January, um, there's still a movement with these groups to get rid of Calbright because of the money that is tied up in Calbright and um the amount of bureaucracy that is involved in the Student Center Funding Formula also. So I have another board meeting with uh FAC the end of this month, and then the beginning of March, we have a advocacy and policy conference where we will get to, you know, hear about new legislation that will come forward to kind of deal with some of these issues and have a chance, I think normally we're in McGuire's Office and Wood's Office on those dates, so I think they're going to do a virtual kind of thing, and there's going to be more students involved this year, since everything will be in the same manner that we're doing right now, so. Any questions for me?
You, Professor Hagerty, thank you very much for your report. All right, seeing no questions, uh, let's see, five point three, President Engman?
Afternoon, everyone. Um, just one, a couple of points. Thank you guys for approving the SERP. We're looking forward to sitting down and negotiating some of the finer details for CSEA on that. And on another positive note, um, we are happy, happy, as Silas mentioned, to be uh working with career ed and the farm and the construction program to um get that farm stand remodeled and and give the students something permanent on campus, so that's all I have for today.
That's great, thank you. President Engman, all right, uh, let's see, five point four, Management Council. Do we have Professor Hamel here? All right, I didn't see our student trustee is, uh, Ms. Peters here. Okay, moving on to six point one, Dr. Flamer?
Thank you. I want the trustees to know a few things. One is, just add to my report, is uh George Potomayamos has sent in an application to participate in the ACCJC Peer Review Membership Team. So we should know here in a few weeks whether he's been approved for that. But also, I really want to thank Tammy Engman and and her colleagues on the CSEA Board for working so closely with the administration, not just for the, for the issue about the farm stand, but also their their willingness to meet with the administration this week to talk about issues that that we we, that we can address together in terms of return to normalcy in fall of two uh twenty-one. So thank you, CSEA, for working with us to to, number one, anticipate the issues that we'll have to address, but also working with us to address those issues.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Flamer, um, and and likewise for the CSEA, thank you for being uh frontline on some of these topics in particular and uh providing that kind of support to our college. I I know my community down here is definitely clamoring for some return to normalcy, and of course, we only want to do that if it's safe, so thank you all for your work and diligence on that. Moving us to item six point two, Dr. Hill?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate uh Silas and Dean Mayor. I, it's been a little shining sunshine going to the, picking up my CSA, seeing some other people from CR, m- my colleagues and other people, and going to the little farm store, and e- even more exciting when I call it, oh, we have the Silas here today, um, or students, which is also fun, so that that's been really lovely. And I was actually the CTE Dean when we hired Silas. So it's been really fun watching him grow um along with Dean Mayor. And I've learned about dry farming and and asking Silas if he can teach people how to raise bees, and asking him five million different things, and he's a good sport about it. This weekend, we were so excited, uh, sound when we heard that the audit, um, you know, especially enrollment management, that that's not always gone so well for us. So uh, we were very appreciative of Vice President Morrison for her um kind of sharing with us just recently here that that it looks like things were good on on that that front, so we're excited. We've been super busy preparing for um fall, so the, all the fall schedule is being built right now, uh, which is very confusing, um, so we're getting that together, and um lots of stuff still going through curriculum and distance education for all this online teaching, faculty are working extremely hard, um, Student Services is figuring this all out, and I was sad I couldn't go to the first gen session. I I kept on Aaliyah, you know, first gen myself, I would, I want to present at one of those coming up, and so she's she's just going to have me do that, so I'll look forward uh to that. And so she's, she's going to have me do that. So I'll look forward to that when the time comes. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer. The student panel was just so much fun. Those students were amazing and thank you for approving some of their stipends today.
Trustee Dorn.
I am curious with building the fall schedule, is it going to be in-person classes? Are you doing percentages? Or what's the current belief?
And I can defer to President Flamer. We've been talking about this quite a bit, a lot. And he's, you know, has specific targets by modality. And it will be a mixture of in-person, hybrid, and online. And right now, the deans are trying to schedule it such that it is a healthy mixture of all of those. Now, having said that, it's easier to switch from in-person schedule to online. It's extremely difficult to switch from online schedule to in-person. So if you see more face-to-face on the schedule once it posts than you would expect, it's because we might have to pull some of that back if the health, you know, depending on what President Flamer and Health Department advises us to do. But we're trying to not just roll out a completely online schedule or a completely face-to-face schedule for the fall, because neither of them seems completely like what would be best for our community and the students. We've learned so much about what, about how diverse the needs of our diverse student body are during this pandemic and once we get back. So we've learned through student filling out survey results about their preferences for online, how they think they're doing in these online classes, what kind of students are taking these online classes, and what they might want moving forward. And so it's not a one-size-fits-all is what we're definitely seeing fall out everywhere, is that different students have different needs, given who they are and their goals.
And do you or President Flamer have a sense on students being vaccinated, that they're going to be? And even if that's going to be possible by fall semester in Humboldt County?
Do you want me to take that, or would you like to?
Oh, go ahead, Angelina. I'll just clean up.
All I know, yeah, you clean up, please. All I know is that we've already heard, so we know that we have students who, for health reasons, cannot be vaccinated. We know that we have students and faculty who will not want to be vaccinated. And then we know we have students and faculty and employees who really, really want to get vaccinated ASAP. And I even had one for dean reach out to President Flamer to see if one of our particular faculty can get vaccinated right away to keep teaching in person this semester. You want to clean up now?
No, no, actually, Dr. Hill, that was fantastic. But, and I also just want to add that I'm in constant contact with the county to, for them to narrow down when CR, as the education sector, not K through twelve, because they're doing it now, but when higher ed, HSU and CR can get in line to be vaccinated. As if you're following the news, the county is a little bit hesitant because of the level of vaccinations, the vaccines. So really, it's where we're taking day by day, but I'm in constant contact, pushing the county to give me some answers for our faculty, staff, and students. But so far, the answer is, we don't know yet.
And so with the international students and international consultant, what, how does the vaccination play out in there? And I mean, do you have any feedback on that yet?
I don't have any feedback on that one, trustee Dorn, yet.
Well, because they can't land, well anyhow.
Exactly.
Dr. Flamer, I'm assuming that, like, just about anything that we pull the trigger on in terms of our in-person instruction, or even, even whether we're planning for online instruction, that whenever we decide we're going to do a thing, it's for that whole semester. In other words, there'll be no mid-semester shift, even if suddenly we land a bunch of doses halfway through, right? I mean, we're talking a semester-by-se semester planning basis here. Or am I wrong about that?
I cannot say that if, for example, in the fall twenty-one, that we open up, for example, seventy percent face-to-face and thirty percent online. I can't guarantee that we would hold that throughout the semester. It depends on the COVID surges and when that may happen. But as Dr. Hill said, we're, we'll be in a good position that if courses are face-to-face, then we can, then we can transition to online very quickly.
Can I just add really quickly to that? And so people, President Flamer doesn't, but people frequently confuse online and face-to-face and synchronous and hybrid. Those are very, very different in terms of what you can do with them mid-semester and what you can't do with them. It gets highly technical and you, I don't want to go into it here, but they're all very different in very important ways.
And so, so we're trying to approach fall of twenty-one in a very hopeful manner. So we'll actually see what happens with the variants of the COVID and also the level of vaccines available for our county.
Thank you both.
Can I just say one more thing?
Trustee Dorn.
And sort of as a side note, with the vaccine and in-class person learning, is I guess at some point, the board or you and president will discuss the board meeting in person. Because one thing that sticks in my mind was the Fortuna School Board was heavily criticized for they did not meet in person, but yet they were doing in-person classes. And so I, I think at some point, you and trustee Kelly, or whether the whole board discusses it, we need to have that discussion.
That's very appropriate. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hill, for your report and Dr. Flamer for your leadership on all of this. I appreciate you both. All right, let's see. If there's no further discussion or questions here, let's move on to item six point three, Vice President Morrison.
Hello again. I guess, following Silas's report, and as Angelina mentioned as well, I was a CSEA member. And it was something I looked forward to every week, going to pick up my share. Not only, like she said, it possibly led into other colleagues, but also just to get out and never always knowing exactly what you were going to be bringing home and what you were going to be doing with it. So, thank you, Silas. And I guess what I'll add to this report on that same note is on here, one of the bullets, it does mention how the farms the farm operations fund balance has, is finally growing year-over-year. It had a over fourteen thousand dollar increase. And then if you also saw the figures that Silas showed on his report for the expenditure and revenues expected for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it looks like that fund balance will be again growing. So, so great job there. And, and he also mentioned that the books aren't final yet, but actually, yes, they are as of today, which is also great news. This three-eleven report gets reconciled to the district's general ledger in the annual audit report. And so in that reconciliation, there were no discrepancies, no adjustments necessary. So these do represent the true ending fund balances and increases. And I think that's all that I have to add, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice President Morrison. Excellent report. Any questions or comments? Thank you. All right, six point four, Mr. Quelo.
Yes, thanks. So the report today is pretty complete. I'd like to give a shout out to Leah Dumphy, the foundation partner with the Multicultural Center on the First Generation Celebration. And we had quite the turnout. And it was, it was very life-affirming to see how positive our students were and how appreciative they were of the information they were receiving, hearing the success stories of alumni. I think Leah and myself agreed that we kind of uncovered a way to deliver information to our students that probably be beneficial once a year as a welcome back to students of getting motivated by hearing success stories and then being able to educate them on the different services that the college provides. So we're looking forward to working on that come August, September. Thank you.
For any of my trustee colleagues who didn't get the opportunity to attend that event, I would just like to let you know that Mr. Quelo happens to do side gig moonlighting as a DJ, DJ Marty Mar. Hopefully, we'll be able to see some of those skills in action next time we have a fundraising event. Any questions or comments for Mr. Quelo? All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, at this time, we'd ask our colleagues for discussion or comments on future agenda items, reports or requests for information. Trustee Dorn.
It's not really a report, but I would like to have an update on, now that you've mentioned that Bill Ayers has closed out the file, exactly how the payments transpired with Keenan, especially since we're entering in potentially another partnership. We, last time we discussed this, we didn't know exactly what they were going to cover or not cover. And just a quick update would be greatly appreciated. Not, like I said, not a reporter, an agenda item. I mean, I perhaps could have asked it during the financial report, but I didn't want to broadside anybody.
Do, do my other trustee colleagues have any thoughts about that?
It's okay with staff. It's okay with me.
Dr. Flamer?
Oh, absolutely. It's okay with the administration.
Great. Let's see, do we, do we vote on those things? Do we have to vote on individual requests, or if there's just no, okay, cool. All right. Let's see, anything else on seven point one? Thank you, trustee Dorn. All right. Well, with that, I don't believe we have closed session today. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so nothing to disclose there. And with nothing further, I believe we are adjourned. Do I win an award for fastest meeting ever, two twenty-four? No? All right. Thank you, everybody. Be well.
Take care, be safe.
Thank you. Bye.
For helping us host, Cynthia. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
My pleasure.